Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to City Council. This is June 21st, 2021. It has been a beautiful day in Canyon City. And we're going to go ahead and start our meeting with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Absent.
Councilmember Hockes.
Present.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Prudential.
Here.
And let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. And I'd also just like to welcome everybody who's attending today's meeting as well. It's nice to have so many people in the audience. We do have two requests to speak to Council. And it looks like there's some more coming along. But we're going to go ahead and start with Martin Welch, if you'd like to come and... Just go ahead and go to the...to microphones, please.
Good evening. I'm Martin Welch, citizen of Canyon City. Do I...do you still do the address? Anyway, I live here.
We have it. We have it.
I live here.
Yeah, we have it on the document, so you're good.
I'm a board member with Royal Gorge River Initiative Organization, and we're just coming again to kind of update you guys on what we've been up to and what we've been doing. And it's a...we didn't plan it this way, but a perfect evening because I think our plans are very harmonious and go right along with this fantastic plan these guys have put together that's up for adoption tonight. So, just to kind of update my...tonight, I'd like to just update about the Whitewater Park and what we have going with that. So, we have a great whitewater park. It's been fantastic, but we're kind of getting to where we're going to enter the next phase of the whitewater park. We have hired recreational engineering and planning, which is a nationally known river engineering firm. They're actually based in Salida, so we have them right in our backyard. They're responsible for the whitewater parks, not only in Salida, but in Buena Vista or Buena Vista, if you're from Colorado. And as well as one of the best new parks in the country in Montrose, Colorado as well. And they're working up in the Northeast and everywhere else. So, we're really, really blessed to have these guys. And they were down last week and kind of went over, you know, just beginning that process. So, we're paying them. We have our initial bid for proposal. And that...that's a $10,000 kind of proposal that they're going to provide for us. So, when we get them paid, we'll come back and we'll present you guys with this fantastic, engineered, you know, ready-for-permitting, you know, kind of shovel-ready project for the whitewater park. And again, we have a white...great whitewater park now, but just like all the other improvements that we're talking about improving on, it's just the next phase of that and creating what we feel will be a world-class destination that'll be able to house, you know, legitimate competitions and events like the, you know, even expanding on the existing whitewater festival, attracting even Olympic athletes, big sponsorships. And that's kind of the next phase that we hope to get this to. Just, man, just a reminder, Chris, our president, will be coming up here in a little bit and talking. You know, we really see this project. It does have the two new features are somewhat river surf. That's the goal of these...the two new features within the park. But really, what we see in the next phase of this construction is something that'll benefit, you know, fishermen, kids, people that hike along the river, everything. And we really want to embrace or create an even better place for the community to engage with the river and on the river. So, that's really all I have. I'll leave the other 45 minutes up for someone else, maybe. Chris, you can have my extra 45 seconds. I said minutes, right? Anyway, thank you again for all you do. Appreciate the Council and all their hard work and the staff and all their hard work. And these consultants that we got to meet tonight, the Planning Department, all you guys, we really appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, very much. And we'll go ahead and have Chris Moffett come up. And you have...you have a good three minutes, if you'd like to take that time.
Hey, Council. How's it going? Thanks for having me today or letting me speak. Again, Chris Moffett, I am the President of Royal Gorge River Initiative Organization. We planned that I would speak first, then him. So, anyway, that's how all plans go, right? Basically, I wanted to come in and just reintroduce Royal Gorge Rio to the Council and to the new Councilmember. And basically, I'm just here to emphasize that the Royal Gorge River Initiative Organization is advocating for the community, much like this plan is advocating for the community. We're a direct descendant of WKRP. WKRP, not the TV show, but the Whitewater Kayak Raffing Park. And WKRP formed the first whitewater festival, and the first whitewater festival begat the whitewater park. So, the whitewater festival's been around for 14 years, I believe I counted, and we're moving, having the next one coming up here soon, July 23rd and 24th. RG Rio is planning all the whitewater events for that whole thing. The parent organization, WKRP, has been instrumental in developing all the former plans that helped out with any sort of river project whatsoever. And the River Improvement Detail Plan was adopted by City Council. That was paid for by WKRP and is on the official city website. Royal Gorge Rio just continues WKRP's original mission, but we expanded it not just to include a whitewater park. We're trying to build a culture in the community so that folks can be proud of being from here, you know, add a little more dimension to what we have going on in the community. And I just want to point out a few things we've done so far this year. We've had a river cleanup, very successful, got a lot of garbage out of the river in multiple sections. We did over 35 miles. We continue to help out with the Royal Gorge Whitewater Festival, and we'll always continue to help out with the whitewater festival, no matter which organizations ever back out or anything. RG Rio will be there. We organized an educational seminar that taught 60-plus river guides, accurate information about the community. That was called the Fremont County Guide Rendezvous. We had over 11 speakers there, flora, fauna, history, you name it. We're having our first-ever event on Saturday that's independent, and we're doing a town race series. There's more to come on Facebook about that. And we led the charge on the Life Jacket Loner Program. I know a lot of partner organizations helped out with that, but we were the ones that became the squeaky wheel to get it, you could say. So, basically, I'm here to say, we're here to stay, and we're just excited for the future, and we're happy to be a part of this town and this community. So, thank you so much for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris Moffett. Is there any questions or comments from the Council for Chris? Go ahead, Councilmember.
I just wanted to share that I had the opportunity, actually, to go out there on Monday and hear directly from Recreation Engineering and Planning and find out a little bit about who they were and what they were wanting to do. And I was just really excited to hear that so many of the things that all of us have talked about with our master plan and with the future, those are things that, you know, this organization really believes in and has been advocating for for a really long time. So, it was neat to hear that the people that they're partnering with have that same heart and vision that seems to align very well with the things that all of us have been working really hard on. So, I was really excited that you guys came. I appreciate that you guys took the time to come tonight and continue to update us. Sometimes it feels like we hear about things once, and then we don't hear about it again until it comes across for us to be able to have an opportunity to make decisions. So, thank you, guys, for taking the time to update us. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Just to echo what Councilmember Reed said, as a new person on Council, thank you so much for being here and introducing yourselves and letting us know what you're about and what you're trying to accomplish in our community. I think it's really impressive, and I'm really excited both to seeing the plan that comes back from RAP as well as to the Whitewater Festival in July. So, thanks for what you guys do, and thanks for contributing to making our community an even better place.
Thank you. Yeah, we're hoping to have something hopefully in August. So, maybe by August, September, we'll definitely come update y'all, so.
Fantastic. Administrator Ryan Stevens.
Yeah, just to go along with that, we currently have RG Rio on the Vision Committee Agenda for September 22nd to come back and talk with us in more depth about their plans, and hopefully we have the engineering from that as well.
Well, you've definitely been putting Canyon City on the map for recreation and changing what was once an industrial dumping ground into an incredible gem and beauty, and that is our Arkansas River that runs right through town, and making it reach the potential that it needs to. So, we really appreciate you and all of your committee for making that happen.
Thank you. And any input at all, please let us know. But thank you very much, y'all.
Well, I do want to put a little seed in...to plant, and that is next year, we are planning some 150-year anniversary events, and we would like to invite RG...is it REIO? RIO?
Rio, yep.
Rio to help maybe participate with that, with maybe doing some water safety workshops and maybe giveaways of PFDs and things like that.
Absolutely. We love water safety. That's our favorite thing, so, yeah.
And, you know, some fun things in there, too. So, we'll contact you with some more details and see what we can do together for that.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy.
And I just want to say, you know, thank you, and you and I have been...done a couple of things. But, you know, and I think it's good to go ahead and talk about...just throw out real quick about our whitewater festival and just the dates, just so, you know, there's a lot of people here. Let them know.
Well, okay, Royal Gorge Whitewater Festival, July 23rd and 24th, bringing back all the events everybody loves. The rafters love the gorge race. This will be the first time it's back since we took over from the Parks Department. And then, we're going to have the Build Your Own Boat Race. Registration's open. So, and the prizes for the Build Your Own Boat Race this year, we have $3,000 or $2,000 in cash prizes. First place is a $1,000 gold coin. Second is a $750 cash prize, and third is a $250 cash prize. Also have a lot of new events for people who aren't familiar with the river. We have the Fremont County Floaty Rodeo on Friday night, so bring out anything that floats and float the river at 7:30, just to show a force. Everybody's welcome. And then, the Ducky Dash, that's like a little tournament. Everybody's welcome for that one as well. And then, just a few more. Unfortunately, I have so many...there's so many events, I cannot name them all.
Is there a website we could go to?
Absolutely, yes. Royal Gorge Whitewater Festival has a website, and registration is open. So, thanks for letting me plug that, Tim. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to be awesome. And based on how flashback on Maine was such a huge success, that I'm sure the whitewater festival's going to be bigger than ever.
Oh, it's going to be awesome.
Where it's just also ready to get out and celebrate.
Yeah, me too.
Awesome. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you, y'all.
I'd like to invite Bridger Langston to come address City Council next.
How you guys doing tonight?
Good. You have three minutes. There'll be a little green light that'll show you...it'll come on, and then it'll give you a warm 30-second warning.
I thought I was going to get to touch it.
Yeah, you're good.
So, anyways, me and a bunch of other people are here to bring up the whole side-by-side issue. There's...a lot of people are against them, riding them on the roads, and we're kind of trying to see if we could kind of veer out of that, given the fact that, you know, a lot of us that do ride them, we use them to go back and forth to work, saves on gas. Everybody knows that that's pretty hard right now. A lot of them are safe, you know, they've got headlights, turn signals, brake lights, four-point harnesses. A lot of them are safer than, you know, a lot of most of your cars, in my opinion. I bring my son around in it all the time. I haven't gotten a ticket yet. So, we're just kind of trying to get it out there to be maybe possibility to, you know, if you guys do allow it, then maybe there could be like a guideline to where we have to follow the rules. Obviously, you get insurance. Like mine, I've got full coverage on mine. So, if we were to get in an accident, treat it as the same thing as like a traffic violation. If you're speeding, then you just lose your privilege altogether of being able to license your side-by-side. Because I think, and honestly, on a tourist side of it, if you think about it, you guys have a lot of people that come here and camp and all that stuff, you know, between the gorge and all that. But if you guys were to permit them to ride their side-by-sides in the town, obviously not on the highways or anything, but in the town, that would...we would probably be standing alone against like one of the only cities in...I think there's two other ones in Colorado that are allowed. I know West Cliff, Silver Cliff, and I think Buena Vista and parts of Salida, you're allowed to do it and you're allowed to ride. But you have to have registration. Where at?
Florence.
Florence, yeah, Florence, too. You have to have registration, insurance, and you have to have all the stuff to meet the criteria, just like you would if you were in a car. And, I mean, really, I just think it would be a good idea, because, I mean, essentially, at the end of the day, people are going to continue to do things, and then they're going to get in trouble, and then, you know, whatever. It'd just be safer just to go here, go through you guys, and make it, you know, like if they get caught and they're doing something really stupid, let's say they're speeding or whatever, then you've lost that privilege forever. You're done with it. Other than that, I don't know. That's all I really have to say.
That's great. Thank you. We have several others that are going to speak on the same subject, so maybe if we save our questions when they're done.
Yep.
Thank you for your representation. Next, we have Ryan Hand. Doing great.
Good. I'm going to be real optimistic here because I'm the shotgun of people, and I'm a horrible public speaker. So, I'm going to try and beat this dead horse that we're all going to give you, along the same lines. But talking about the legalization of UTVs on the streets within the city limits, same thing. For my own selfish reasons, I would like to see them be legalized because, you know, a lot of us, we invest money and time in these things for our families because we live in this banana belt, this great climate area, and we want to spend as much time utilizing those outdoors as we can. So, you make a big financial investment in something that unfortunately is a really expensive lawn ornament five to six days out of the week. So, it'd be nice to be able to take those things and utilize them safely within town, within some guidelines, you know. From a, you know, business standpoint or a city standpoint, I think it's a huge tourism thing, and I think that a lot of the surrounding states around us, I mean, we're almost completely surrounded by states that legalize them on a state level. People drive them like automobiles. And we live on the doorstep of all these great outdoor activities. I mean, if you drive 20 minutes down the road, you can go to Texas Creek, and it's a fantastic UTV area to go ride. And for a lot of people, if you were coming in from out of state, or if you're planning a vacation, if you're like, hey, I can go get an Airbnb or a hotel, and I can ride this around with my kids and go to parks and stuff like that, then throw it on the trailer and take it 20 minutes up the road and go for a ride, I think it'd be advantageous for something for our area. It'd be something to add to what I think is a pretty stout repertoire of things for people to do outdoors. As we're trying to really present our community as a hub for outdoors. We've got all the stuff that's gone into the bicycle trails, all the outdoor walking trails. I think it's just kind of another notch in the belt for our community of things that would be mutually enjoyed by a lot of people. You know, I think giving it some guidelines of how people have to do it and what they need to do to participate would be a healthy way for that to grow, because not just here, but nationwide, this...the whole, you know, kind of UTV group and scene, it's really something that's exploded everywhere. And it kind of grows whether people want it to grow or not. And I think if we get in ahead of time and give it some guidelines to kind of help it grow in this area in a way that's healthy, instead of just having a bunch of people kind of bootlegging under the radar around where they're not supposed to, I think it would be something that would be highly productive if we, you know, make it...do it the right way, I guess what I'm saying, you know. I'm sure everybody in this group's going to tell you that we've probably ride ours around when we're not supposed to, and I would love to do that without, you know, looking over my shoulder that am I going to get drug off to the hooch scout in front of my two crying children. So, you know, that would...that would be nice to not have to worry about that, so.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Jeffrey Munson.
Well, I'll approach this a little different way than everybody else did so far. This could be a moneymaker for you guys. This will bring more people in. You guys, just like us, see people driving through here every day with these vehicles on their trailer. If they can stop, get out, drive around, take their kids for a ride, take them down to eat, take them down to the park, enjoy the festivals, you can charge us a user fee for your streets. You can put a sign up saying that, you know, if you're in town, you need to buy a permit for it. So, you guys could generate income by this, by the people that live here and the people that visit. So, I'm going to hit you where it probably helps you the most. Let's get some money out of it, and let's keep us all out of trouble. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nate Mendoza.
How's it going? So, same thing as Ryan. I'm not good at public speaking, but same thing, the UTVs. We spend a lot of money on these things. Our families enjoy the heck out of them. They're great. It'd be nice to not have to trailer them everywhere we go, considering they're...it's...I don't see the difference between that and like an old 50-something Jeep that, you know what I mean, doesn't have airbags and stuff. And I would...I think it'd be awesome to be able to just cruise it from one end of town to the other to get to the trails. But really, that's...that's about it. I think we have a lot of people that would like to see this happen. And hey, if it doesn't work out, I mean, you can always make it legal. If it's...you know what I mean? You could...we could go back to where we are right now if it's...if it's not working out. But I think this gentleman, I don't know his name, but he had a good point. I mean, it's...it would be a huge money generator for this town. I think there's only a few places, West Cliff, Florence, and a couple other places that do have it to where it's legal. But, I mean, why not? If it's going to bring people in this town, people are going to spend money, it's going to help our economy. So, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tyson Cod.
Cool.
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 How's it going, everybody?
I guess I have the same perspective as everybody else. It's a moneymaker, and it does need guidelines. My machine has been made DOT certified, tires, windshield, turn signals, horn. It's a car, and I'd like it to be treated as such, make some money so we can ride around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. And then, last, we have Jeffrey Munson. You already spoke. Okay, so we got...
I'll say it again.
Did we? You haven't been called up yet?
No.
Mark, here you go. You're up.
So, hi, I'm Mark. I'm the general manager at City Auto Plaza. I've been in this town for about three years. Moved down here about three months ago because I do enjoy being here and like the area, everything. The people that are speaking to you are, I mean, a lot of them are business owners. They do good things in this community. We're not trying to, you know, bring something up that's just unheard of. But pay attention to how many scooters run through this town. How many...I've seen a lawn tractor, as of yesterday, running around with a trailer behind it. I don't think he has full coverage insurance. I do. We pay a lot of money to have that stuff, to try to do the right thing. It's like the one gentleman stated about, not the redheaded stepchild, but something like that. It was you. Anyways, I'm the one that rides mine around town, and, you know, I ride it under the speed limit, you know, on and on and on. And I have passed, I don't know how many, police and sheriffs. And not until last week, I was getting my haircut, and an individual took a picture of me parked in front of the place that I spend good money to go get my haircut, and they took a picture of it, sent it to the police department, and then here they come, you know, of course, because they have a job to do. I think our money could be...taxpayers' money could be spent much better places than coming to get somebody on their side-by-side to get their haircut. And it's like they said, it is about money. I understand that you guys probably...it's not just the money, you know, it's...there's a lot of other things involved in it. But if we do it the right way and have good people behind that, that actually this town and community means something to all of us, that it wouldn't be a bad thing, you know. You would get a little bit of revenue out of it. But that's on us to be able to follow the laws and the rules and, you know, the regulations to make sure that we do it properly. You know, a lot of people say, well, they're noisy. How many Harleys do you guys hear every single day, you know, or Honda Civics, or Subarus, or...I mean, and I'm not trying to be, you know, funny. I mean, I'm being dead serious. I understand your concerns, but let's really look at them and make sure that that's the real concern, you know, because if it is, then we have a lot of other avenues we need to go look at as well. So, I think if we do it the right way, we can...this could be a good thing like everyone else has stated, you know. It is nice. I drive mine to work. I live four minutes from work. I drive a diesel pickup as well. It's not good for a diesel pickup to get fired up for four minutes, drive to work, shut off. You know, that's not your problem. That's mine. I understand that. But I'm just simply saying, you know, it is nice, but we have to follow the rules. I've never driven on the highway. I, you know, none of that stuff. I follow the guidelines, other than it's...Colorado says it's not legal, you know, but some of our other cities have already taken it, made a little bit of money on it, and it seems to be working for them. So, I think we could do the same thing if we do it the proper ways. That's why we're here, to try to do it the proper way, and hopefully you guys will let us help out and do that.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, everyone that came to address City Council. Is there any reactions from City Council that you'd like to see? Councilmember Hockes.
The one comment I want to make with this last gentleman, about everybody that spoke with regards to this, I appreciate everything that you said that goes along with it. And the thing that I appreciate with what you said is, let's look at a way that we can make it legal, make it safe. I'm not concerned about the money. Okay, you know, my concern on City Council is that the people that live in this town can go from one place to the next in complete, safe travel, okay? And your attitude, well, I don't have any problems with the other one, but your attitude is the right way. So, when we look at this, if we look at this down the roadway, that's the concern that I would hope that the police department and everybody else that gets involved in that looks at it. And the reason why I say safety is because I spent 27 years on that road watching people get hurt, maimed, and killed. And a lot of them have that because they ignored safety. Safety is the number-one thing. I don't care whether it's your own vehicle, whether it's a bicycle, or even walking down Main Street and crossing the street. The safety factor is the most important thing, in my opinion, when we look at it. So, your approach, if it goes that way, what you said, and I hope everybody takes that into consideration when you look at that, let's look at it. If we're going to do it, make sure what has to be done so that you the rider are safe and protected, and me, the citizen, is protected, and everybody else in the city. So, thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Reed.
So, thank you all for coming and speaking on that. It's something that we've mentioned before and talked about. So, I was just wondering, maybe this is a question for Ryan. For us in this format, is this something that we can bring up again to be able to discuss like more details? Is this something that can be...I don't remember how long it was that we approached this. I feel like it was a year ago.
It was right before COVID.
So, is there a way to, since this has been brought forth to Council this way, to kind of bring it up again for more formal discussion and decision-making, or how does that work?
I think if the attitude of councils that they'd like to have further exploration, I'd probably recommend an initial meeting with the interested parties here tonight with staff members and some city...probably two City Council members that are interested and do a little bit more digging into the possibilities and see if that's worth pursuing further for maybe a Vision Committee. Ryan, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
I would agree with that.
Councilmember Dennehy.
I just want to say thank...I think you guys all presented very well. I understand your stance, and I see where the state comes back with this. And unfortunately, it is kind of a silly thing. You've got a four-wheel vehicle. Most of them have roll cages in them. You can put a...you can put a dampener on your muffler system. You know, we allow tractors in our town. You know, we allow tractors in our town. A lot of them are going to do hayfields, a lot of them are going to run and do, pull, help somebody pull something out or anything. And I guarantee that they are not insured. I mean, they're not, they're not licensed and insured and they're running on our roads. So this is something, you know, that, that I personally, I do not own one. But I, but I would definitely think that, you know, this is something that we should, we should look at and pursue this. I think this is a, I think this is something that we really should take a good, hard look at.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to just kind of build off of what other council members have said here. The, you know, I think this is a subject that is worth discussion. And, and I agree with you, Madam Mayor, about how to get started. I would recommend, though, that we also look at the, the legal provisions and aspects of this. The, because it seems to me that there are, there are perhaps some compromises or ways that people that have these vehicles can utilize roads as they are now. I mean, tractors have to have the slow vehicle placard, that kind of the diamond shape on them. And if, you know, if these vehicles were so placarded, could they fall under the same category as a tractor? So questions like that, I think council would need answers to be able to, to make a, a good decision. Because as Frank Hawke has said, you know, the, the safety of the public and the safety of you as a group of, of users is important to us. You know, the, the fee aspect of it is, doesn't, doesn't carry a lot of weight. You know, a, a fee to cover costs, city costs, that we might incur in managing such a program would be appropriate to look at, I would think. But, but it seems to me that there needs to be both the discussion with staff and users and a little bit of investigation, what, what other towns have done, what are best practices? What can we do? Where are, where are the guide rails on this for us legally? And, you know, and to continue this conversation.
Catherine, do you have any initial reactions as our legal advisor?
I mean, it's doable legally. If you want to do it, plenty of communities have done it. And even the state of Colorado's model traffic code now has different regulations for different types of vehicles like this. So it's pretty well-developed and so we can definitely come up with something if you want to move forward and give you kind of guidance as to, like the mayor Protem said, where your, where your boundaries are and your parameters are.
Thank you, Catherine. And then we have councilmember Smith.
Well, I'll, I'll echo again what everybody said before. But I will say that I saw a kayak with wheels on it and a motor in the back of it driving around town with some fiberglass in deal, I don't know what it was. But I, it surprises me that that can have, can get a license through our Department of Motor Vehicles and something that this, this safe can't. And I will also say, in the tourism perspective, I went to Key West in March and they had 47 businesses that rented these things out on top of mopeds. And it was, I mean, by the end, by, if you didn't get there before nine o'clock in the morning, they were gone. People rented the heck out of them and they rode them all over town, spent money. And I, I just don't, I don't understand why not.
Councilmember Smith, did you get a picture of this dry land mobile kayak?
No, but if I see it again, I'll take a picture of it.
So the, the tractor that I said wasn't a tractor that I specified?
No, I even, I was just talking in general. And we even see tractors without placards.
No, no, I was just spec, it was a lawn tractor.
Councilmember Dennehy, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to add on to that because I think one thing that, you know, as we look at this and, and I'll be honest, from my own personal perspective, I'd like to see this done sooner than later. You know, because we still see the old fashioned doom buggies from years ago that are built with no roll cages or anything in them, and they're allowed to drive around. So I think this is something that we should look at and, you know, let's get together as a group and, and let's get this moving sooner than later.
Or, or kit cars. There's a, there's, I mean, there's tons of categories.
If people from Denver and Colorado Springs heard about this, there's tens of thousands of these things in this state alone. So I mean, you would bring so many people into this community.
So we need to keep order. I'm sorry, we have, we have a process that we go through and we've gone through that official process. But you will have an opportunity to have more to say. It sounds like overall the city council is willing to have more conversations. We have everyone that addressed city council, we have your contact information. And if we have two council members that would be interested in joining these initial discussions. Councilmember Reed, also, councilmember Reed and councilmember Smith. If one of you can't come, please let councilmember Dennehy know and he'll fill in. So Ryan, we have these two council members. This, I'm sure we'll have police chief, legal counsel, and other pertinent staff. We want to make sure that we, I mean, if we're inviting tens of thousands of potential riders, number one, as said, public safety. I think our town size is important because our town is considerably larger than West Cliff and Silver Cliff and Florence. Noise and specific guidelines to make it a legal and safe process for everyone involved. So thank you again for being here and advocating for our community and being a part of the solution makers. We do need to move on now to councilmember announcements. Do we have any announcements from the, our councilmembers? Mayor Protem, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind everybody, we have a vision committee this Wednesday, 6:23. We're going to be talking about water tap rates and the American Recovery Act funds that are available to the city and what, what categories we're interested in seeing those funds go into. And kind of on a personal note, I'd like to remind everyone or let people know that the husband of one of our councilmembers, Bill Gonzalez, has been having some health issues. And so if you're so inclined, please send your good thoughts and prayers his way. And we, we wish him a speedy recovery.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hamrick. We appreciate those sentiments. I would also like to say thank you to the Community Foundation for Canyon City that put on Flashback for Maine. It was incredible. I don't know how many of you were able to attend. I know, yeah, you were there. I saw Jim there, I saw you there. I hope, I don't know if you guys were able to attend or not, but it was awesome. Oh, yeah, you had baseball tournament. But it was incredibly attended, the band was amazing. And I think my favorite comment I heard from the crowd was, I am just so happy being here with all these people who are so happy and having fun. It was just a really nice way to get out of the pandemic and get back to normalcy. I also need to give a little shout out to our city planner, Patrick Moretti. I don't know if you know, but he has an alternate life. I had the, I had the pleasure of seeing him perform at the Rialto Theater. And he was one of the main actors and he, Patrick, you were very, very, very talented and convincing as a villain. Would you like to say anything?
Just that Russell Sprouts has uttered his last curses foiled again.
And you shaved your evil mustache.
I did. I shaved the evil mustache off. I am not the villain that I play, if I can paraphrase Shakespeare.
Well, I will say it was a melodrama. So every time he entered the stage, there's a sign that came up to tell the audience to boo and hiss as much as they could. But tonight, Patrick, I know as we culminate the comprehensive plan along with House Levine that has performed so well on this, you've put a ton of time and talent and professionalism into this and represented Canyon City well. And if I could, I'd put up a sign, thank you so much for your hard work.
Well, there was a cheer and clap one, that card that went up too.
Yes, yes. So well done. Yeah, you did have a particular young fellow that did cheer you on particularly well.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. That was actually the heroes and heroine's son, Oliver. And he, he's something of a fan of mine, so he does cheer for me when everyone else boos and it is appreciated.
Most certainly. I'm sure he was having a little tender heart moment for your abuse. So anyway, thank you for being an important part of our community and being so well-integrated. Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. Ryan Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on June 7th, the special joint session on June 2nd, and the general government meeting on June 9th. 6B authorizes the mayor to reappoint DeeDee Clement and Kirk Soother to the three-year terms on the planning commission. 6C awards bid 3121 for the East Ridge Campground Double Vault Restroom project to CXT in an amount not to exceed $61,590. 6D authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional service agreement for a business recovery assessment program with Roger Brooks International. 6E declares a surplus of, surplus and approval of disposal of surplus equipment. And 6F receives a file and list bills.
Any questions from council? Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the approval to enter into a professional services agreement for the business recovery assessment program, the, first on the, on the, kind of some contractual issues. Under the scope of services, it references Appendix A, Exhibit A as the scope of services. That, that scope of services says that you can have a destination assessment done and an optional recovery plan, or an optional, and an optional recovery plan. And so I would recommend that the scope of services be modified to call out both of those items as being part of what's delivered, because it's optional in the, in the Exhibit A. And so it, it would be good just to tie that down. Commencement, under commencement and completion of work, it would, Ryan, if you have a, a date certain that you're thinking that this needs to be done, it would be good to include a date certain that, that this should be done. And in addition, the other, the other provision that I would recommend that we add to the contract is that the work is not completed until all materials are delivered to the city. It does say that the materials will become the property of the city, but I would like to make sure that that does include the photographs that will be taken. And because I think that's an important point of it, who, who does own the photographs? It seems to say it's going to be the city. But I would like to, to make sure that we let them know that we expect to receive those photographs and not just PDF files, but, but in some suitable electronic format. And I would also, I would also recommend that if they're creating a product that they, that they port into a PDF file, that if we have that software, that we get the original software files and not just PDF files. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification with regard to Mayor Protem's comment about the optional aspect of the, the program. Is that something that is included?
The recovery assessment plan is an option that we have elected, yes.
Okay, perfect. Then I, I second and support Mayor Protem's comments. On a separate issue, I'd just like to commend the city staff for their work, particularly on Item C, the bid for the double vault restroom. Going back and ensuring that they found the, the lowest possible bid and source for that, I think was, went above and beyond and just appreciate their efforts in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to invite Rick Harmon, if you wouldn't mind, if you're coming and talking to us a little bit about the professional services for the business recovery assessment program. Because it sounds it's pretty in-depth and I, I do have a couple of additional questions on it.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Like the assurance that it's just not $35,000 to bring someone in to have a really awesome vacation in Canyon City.
Because that's what it sounds like in the beginning. I know, I can see some work at the end. No, Tom Dixon is the one who kind of, well, we've been talking about this type of thing for quite a while. But we had a lot of conversations about how this would go and how we thought it should go. We, the city hired, basically reimbursed the chamber to hire Roger Brooks for their, for their, their annual meeting. And it went over very, very well. And we've been talking for quite a while about how can we work with, how can we work with local businesses during COVID to understand the whole destination marketing concept? Because the tourism industry gets it, but a lot of our businesses downtown don't understand how to market as a destination. The success of Roger Brooks at the chamber kind of confirmed that we were probably on the right track. So we, we contacted them about this option, this possibility. And Tom in particular, but we, we talked a lot about how is this going to play out? How is it going to affect businesses? Is it going to be a case where somebody comes in and says, you know, you're not doing this right, you're not doing this right? And we had a lot of kind of back and forth about whether we should or shouldn't do this. And we came to the, came to the conclusion that this is not a vacation for them at all. This is, this is very much, if you, take this as an example, you think about the wayfinding signs we have. Are they effective? Do we know? And we, you know, has anybody done a follow-up to see if, see what people think when they come to the community? Can they find downtown? And that's what this does. This takes a look at the entire community from a visitor perspective, from an investor perspective, from a site selector perspective, from anybody that really is affected by economic development and tourism. It takes a look at our community from all of those different lenses and lets us know what are we doing very well and what can we do better? And, and that's, as, as far as it being a vacation, no, they're going to enjoy their time here, I'm sure. We hope they do. But no, it's going to be a very useful tool to help us determine if what we've done so far is effective and help us steer in more directions to help our businesses and our community, not just our businesses, but our community even more. It's as if, thinking about the, the Main Street program and the Main Street strategic plan we went through right at the beginning of COVID, this is an extension of that, really. Because we're going to bring those people back together again and bring, get them involved as stakeholders in this and really start that next charge forward post-COVID.
Thank you.
So that's really what it's all about.
Appreciate that, Rick. At the workshop, is that workshop going to be open to the public?
The, the, the initial one where they go through the.
Does it start out the week doing their tour and at the end of the week they have a workshop? That could be like on Facebook Live.
There's one that's going to be public and then there's the, the optional one that's going to be with stakeholders for a two to three day.
That's the meeting after the meeting?
That's the meeting after the meeting, yeah.
So that, that will include all of our stakeholders?
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. And then he, they mentioned in there how they, they're willing to be the ones to save the difficult conversations of, how does that play out? Is that in the workshop and the meeting after the meeting? Or is it just in the documentation of, hey, it's really important to have your shop open after six?
It'll be in both. And, and that's one of the, one of the.
We know that's going to be a very difficult conversation.
That's one of the issues that I had with it. I don't want them pointing out businesses and saying, you know, you could be doing this better. And that was a big concern of mine. But from what I've seen from their documentation and their, and conversations between them and Tom is that they are very careful about it. They don't point out any businesses. They do show pictures, but I, I fully intend to look at these before, as much as I possibly can. You know, kind of weed through some of this before we actually take it to the public. Because you're right, it could be pretty contentious and, and I certainly don't want that. But we also don't want to lose out on the benefit of what this could provide.
Thank you, Rick. And one more question. It said that they will give us 30 to 70 low-cost ideas to implement. Do we have money set aside or budgeted to help?
These are ideas that businesses can take on their own that are low cost, that we could as a community, but businesses could take on their own also that are low cost. And they've, they've, they sent us an example, a sample of, of a report. And there, there are some things that are very, very simple, cleaning up the front of a, front of a building. Maybe taking a building that has paper on the windows, taking it down and putting up some signage, some wayfinding signage or something. Something that's more destination-oriented type of a thing to draw people in. And there, there were some very, very simple ideas in that presentation.
Imagine, there's some insinuations that there's things that municipalities could do as well. So I just want to make sure, if we're going to do this, we need to be able to implement.
Yeah. And, you know, we're, you know, it's middle of 2021, but we're, we're working and getting started on the 2022 budget. So, you know, there's certainly things that we can, we can put some placeholders in for, for some of those types of things as well. And we typically do that as we do the downtown budget for, for economic development.
Okay, thank you.
In the optional part of it too, will get us a two-year plan, an actual plan that we'll need, we'll need some budget for, yeah.
Very good. Well, I will say that even though at the chamber's annual meeting, it was a Zoom presentation, but I heard from several people. but I heard from several people in the audience that it was one of the best chamber banquet presentations they've seen in a really, really long time. So I can imagine when it comes in live, that it's, it should be really impactful and exciting since they've already had a prelude to him and has built his reputation and rapport with us.
That's our hope, yep.
Excellent. Any other questions for our colleagues up here? Ryan, I do have some questions on the detail of cash disbursements. This is on page two and it was an aquatics feasibility study for 5,040 is, and it says it's for architecture. Is this something new or an old commitment that we made?
This is the old commitment that we had with the county and the rec district.
Okay.
So these are funds that have come over or part, the part of the project that bled into this year.
Gotcha. And then farther down under Nike Retail Services, it says we refunded 2020 sales tax overpayment for almost $40,000. Can I please get a backstory on this?
Yeah, so Nike remitted to the wrong jurisdiction.
Oh. Okay.
So that's the refund of their, it's the Nike online retail store.
Wow, so which jurisdiction was that? May I know?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know that we can share that information even if we did know.
We could only wish.
Probably had a few more residents than we did.
Yeah, okay. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Yeah, I actually had that same question about the sales tax rebate because that was, that was quite a, quite a hefty, hefty amount there. I did have a question on Canyon City Utilities for, the vendor was Canyon City, City of Canyon City Utilities. The description is water, stormwater fees for $17,000. And it showed it being paid by the general fund, the water fund, the parks fund and a small amount, tiny amount to other funds. But we're paying stormwater fees to, to our stormwater department or stormwater utility? What, what is, what is that?
The city still pays utility fees. We pay them to ourselves or to the enterprise funds. So that would be the, the water department and/or stormwater.
So, but this is, this is billed as, as a stormwater, so it's water slash stormwater fee?
Correct.
So it's not, not necessarily a stormwater fee. It might be just a fee for, for water usage?
Water in the parks or, yep.
Okay, thank you. And then the, I noted that there were a couple of payments to Kindred Kids for advocacy services and exams. Was that, is that reimbursement for something court ordered? Is that what, is that what's going on there?
Well, we have a contract with Kindred Kids to provide those services on behalf of the city. It was to replace our victims' advocates, but also we have the exam, the Sane exams as well.
So, so that is for a victim that used their services and under our agreement were reimbursing Kindred Kids.
Correct.
Thank you. And I, that is, that is one organization that does a heck of a job for our community. And then I also noted that there's a, under UMB Bank, North America, there's a description of payment lockbox fees for almost 2,000 bucks. Is that, so what, what kind of lockbox are we, is that a rental? Do you know what that might be, the detail on that?
Yeah, that, that's for, is that utility payments? Yeah. So that, that's the lockbox for all the utility payments.
The one, the blue ones in the front and the back of City Hall?
No, for mailed in payments.
Oh. Any further questions?
I think the lockbox question gets asked at every meeting.
I can put an asterisk. We've told you guys this a million times. All right, I would like to entertain a motion to, for the consent agenda and agenda for tonight's meeting. Councilmember Dennehy, do you want to do it?
I will. I sure will. Can we just get back here real quick so I can get on the right page?
Sure.
Oh my gosh, I got to get back to page.
It's just to approve the consent agenda and agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy? Oh, discussion.
Did, did we have to amend? And what was the, did you, did you have amendments?
The contract, some contract requests.
Catherine, does that require an amendment?
You can approve the consent agenda with Mayor Prohamrick's directions on the contract.
I'd like to amend that, change that with an amendment of, of Councilmember Hamrick's changes to the agenda, to the contract.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennehy, and thank you for putting that out. Councilmember Smith, any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Mayor Smith? Oh, sorry.
Thanks for the offer.
The correct answer there is present.
Oh, I also want to recognize that G D Clements is in the audience. We just reappointed her for the planning commission, so thank you for your further service to Canyon City. And now I'd like to welcome Housele Levine.
We have an administrator's report.
Oh, yes. Do you want to do a report? We're, we're getting kind of long.
Yeah, we're getting a little long. I just want to point out from Community Vitality, our Main Street Program Manager, Tom Dixon, is working on a Fourth of July celebration at Centennial Park, laser light show, music, food trucks, bounce houses, just family friendly activities. Also going on that weekend, we've got Blossom Festivals putting on the carnival that normally happens during blossom weekend. And then we also have a craft fair that's happening at Veterans Park. It was, it was a casualty of COVID. Manitou Springs decided not to do their craft fair or any events until August and they reached out to us to see if they could come to Canyon City and we said absolutely. So very excited to have some activities going on Fourth of July weekend.
Very exciting. And when will this be advertised publicly?
I believe we're got some marketing materials that should be in design and should be going out this week, so.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Now we will go back to Housele Levine. Thank you for coming all the way from Chicago.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. While we got the administrator report, this is a time when we can bring other stuff up to the administrator, okay?
Okay.
And I have
Go ahead, but you can always put your button on too and that helps me know.
And I have something I want to bring up. This has to do with our council meeting in the last one. I would like to have a timeframe set and have the person who sets up all the projects for our two A street projects. So we have an idea of where we're going with regards to this. You know, a lot of people are saying, what are you doing with that two A money? I see one block paved and I can go over here and see a whole bunch of roads that are dire need of paving and work. And to me, I think it's very important, this is the citizens' money, okay? So I would like to have down the roadway, when the administrator can set it up, we have the individual who is the key administrator that says, this is what we're going to do with our two A project money with regards to whether it's the rest of this year or going into next year. This way, we as council members also have the knowledge, when somebody comes and asks us, well, where are the monies going next, next week, next month, next year? We have an answer for them. Right now, we do not have an answer for them, complete answer. And so I think it's very important that we have a meeting set up with the individuals that design where they're going to start doing the two A projects so we can let the public know. Hopefully in July of next year, this area is going to get taken care of. And I would like to see us get to the point where we do some major projects instead of one block here, one block there. I understand there's reasoning for some of that. I know we tore up some streets and put in water lines and everything and so we have to fix it. But I've also seen work done on an area that, to me, you could have went probably four blocks down the road and that area needed more repair than the one that got done. So it's just that, I guess, a question and answer series. So if the administrator can set something up down the roadway, I would appreciate it and I would imagine other members of council would also appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Hockes, for, or actually on our meeting on Wednesday, we'll be discussing a little bit of two A work specifically as it relates to Reynolds and certainly we can set up some additional time to talk about other two A projects.
I understand that, but like I say, I want to, I want to see the person sitting over there that says, this is the formula that I use or my team uses to set up paving project. That's what I want to see.
Okay.
Okay? I appreciate what you're going to do here, but that's what I, I want the individual sitting down there so we as council members can ask him questions if we have a question, why, why is this street being done versus that street?
Sure.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hockes. Councilmember Reed?
So, Ryan, just for clarification on that, on the two A website, we have the list of basically the streets that are going to be taken care of for the year, correct? So when will that be updated for 2022?
That's part of the, the discussion on Wednesday, specifically as it relates to Reynolds because we're looking at doing a long stretch, which will probably eat up quite a bit of the budget for next year.
So in the meantime, though, we can direct citizens to that website to be able to see the list of what's kind of coming down the pipeline currently and what's been done already.
Yeah, we, we certainly have the list of projects that we have on the pipeline for this year and whether or not we get to all of those projects this year, some of those may carry over to next year.
And what is that exact website again?
Well, it's the canyoncity.org website and there's a specific page for two A projects.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, two A streets. And it's a very comprehensive website with costs, predictions, and also the formula of the streets and their conditions and their priority. But we do have a meeting every year where we go over what streets are to come up and we have a say in it and the justification for those. We appreciate staff for that.
And there's also a separate Facebook page as well.
That's true as well. So thank you. It looks like we'll have a couple of conversations coming up. Anything else that council would like to direct to Ryan with questions? Then for the third time, you guys are up. 2040 Picture Canyon City.
First of all, Mayor, thank you so much for having us. Both at once. Thank you so much for having us here this evening, Mayor and City Council. John Housele with Housele Levine. We're absolutely thrilled to be at this point in the process on the precipice of adoption of a plan that this community has worked very diligently on over the last year. We had a few curveballs thrown at us by things beyond our control as impacted every aspect of life, but we recalibrated along the ray and with the help of Patrick in particular, Ryan, Rick and others on staff who were consistently professional, diligent, insightful and the partner we needed on this end of the Zoom call to get this done over the course of the challenges of the pandemic. The participation we've received from this community has been stellar from the very beginning. Challenges aside, whether they were one-on-one interviews, small group, focus group discussions, business workshops or open public workshops. The series of gatherings and workshops that we had to really roll up our sleeves and work through draft content with the Planning Commission and City Council in an incremental fashion, which is something we typically don't do. And it was requested here as part of this process and we welcomed it. And I think it's what led to such a responsive process along the way and a document that is as thorough and as specific as this one is and got us to the point where we are this evening where it is the document we hoped it always would and could be. So we're thrilled at how the process has unfolded. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh, who was the project manager for our team on our end, who really worked diligently with Patrick and others on our team like Tricia Parks, who worked diligently to make sure the graphics, the GIS, all the maps, the layout, the document itself were designed the way it needed to be, working with Patrick and Josh and others on our team. Still have some zoning stuff that we have to get across the finish line in the next week or two that's separate, although it is dovetailed with this effort. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh, who's going to take us through a very brief presentation just to sort of get it on the record and then open it up to any discussions, questions, Mayor, and we'll put it back on your plate to shepherd it forward. But with that, I'll turn it over to Josh Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and Canyon City Council. It's really good to be here in person with you instead of in front of my bookshelf at home. It was a great trip out this morning and it's, it's good, it's incredibly good to be here in person after talking about Canyon City with you all for the past year. Make sure this thing is on here. Of course. Like John was just saying, we had a excellent and collaborative process throughout the project. I think we knew from the minute that we first stepped into the, stepped out here with staff that it was going to be good when our tour was by Jeep. You can see a picture there of John getting into the Jeep tour and probably one of the most unique community tours that we've ever had and thorough. And it was just a really great indicator of things to come. Maybe I'm pushing the wrong button here.
The one without any markings on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to really quickly recap what we've all reviewed together to date, talk about what we, what we've done since the last time we met with you and then take questions. This thing is not responsive. Maybe you should. All right. Yeah, that's just as well. Sorry about that. Okay, so overall, the purpose of the comprehensive plan, this is a guiding document for the city. It's going to provide direction, looking out, out ahead over the next 20 years and start to lay the groundwork for, for a certainty, whether you're a new business owner looking to locate in Canyon City or a developer looking to develop, you and the City Council and the Planning Commission and the community are on the same page and can point back to this as the document that sort of is over all the other ones that provides direction, long range, long range direction for the city. I want to go briefly over the vision goals and core elements that we've discussed, like John was saying incrementally with Planning Commission and City Councils. So first we started with, actually, these aren't necessarily in the order that we discuss them, but they are in the order that they're in the, they are in the plan. So vision, goals and objectives built on community feedback from that excellent community input that we received, over 700 touchpoints throughout the process. We folded that into our vision for the plan, the pathway to the future. And we created some goals that I think I compared to a five-minute mile, things that the community could work towards that are really healthy and actionable goals for Canyon City to work toward over the long term. The next piece in the plan is the land use and development framework. Really, this is the centerpiece of the plan. If you're going to look at one map in the document to start with, this is your map where future development could occur over the next 20 years and where the community wants specific uses to go, whether it's your commercial areas, housing and neighborhoods, areas for investment and identifies future land uses for some of your opportunity areas, areas without, that aren't developed yet. And the land use plan covers not only the municipal boundary, but also the urban growth boundary and identifies priority and identifies priority growth areas for the city's expansion, looking long-term into over the next 20 years. And then the next few, housing and neighborhoods, economic development, and downtown and riverfront, they're sort of subchapters of the land use and development section. So in the housing and neighborhoods element, we talked about both citywide and framework-specific recommendations that are tied to areas on the map. This is all about ensuring quality housing for Canyon City over the long term, and identifying some ways that the neighborhoods and housing can improve and continue to serve the needs of the community. The economic development framework is, identifies areas for the city's employment, land uses, again adds further detail to the land use, the land use plan, and provides some specific framework policies and recommendations tied to those commercial and industrial areas throughout the community and throughout the growth boundary. The downtown and riverfront, one of the cooler maps in the plan, really detailed look at the core area of the city, illustrates in a really graphically pleasing way with a lot of detail how to connect downtown and the riverfront along that core, or that important third street, complete street. And it builds on recommendations from some of your current and still really relevant planning efforts, like the Arkansas River Master Plan and the riverfront mixed-use zoning. So it kind of ties that all together in an important look at the core of the plan. It also touches on some unique things, like activating Macon Plaza with food trucks and events, and completing what we were calling the downtown loop, trails around the downtown and along the riverfront. Transportation and mobility, all about collaboration with some of the agencies that have an influence on Canyon City's mobility, like the Colorado Department of Transportation, getting around regardless of, by all modes, relevant to the conversation that was happening earlier tonight. And then moving on, we've also touched on community facilities and infrastructure, kind of the working side of the city, community character with the four-pronged approach, looking at arts and culture, historic preservation, Canyon City's image and identity, and tourism. And then last, but certainly not least, the parks and open space chapter, touches on all the unique natural and recreational features that make Canyon City a special place to live and visit. I think I said when we were reviewing this section that no matter who we spoke to, the city's natural amenities and access to the outdoors, that was something that came up, no matter who we were talking to, what an important part of the community. So those are the core elements that we've reviewed in depth with council and Planning Commission over the course of the past year as we developed them. And then, since the last time that we spoke, we've been working hard on some updates to the draft document that were directed by, by council. We completed the organization and the layout for the introductory sections. We sort of crystallized some of the things that run throughout the plan into a set of guiding principles that are presented with the vision and the goals. We updated the document throughout with your comments and revisions. Everything that you said and told me or Tricia as we conducted those meetings, we incorporated those changes into the plan document. Oh, there's the guiding principles. We also made some graphic updates throughout, like the update to the urban growth boundary, where we sort of cut off the panhandle at council's direction, added the, expanded the southern priority annexation area. That area is a little larger than it originally was. And we finalized the implementation chapter and matrix. When I showed it to you last, it was sort of in development stages, because we were still kind of fine-tuning the recommendations of the plan. So that is now in its final status. And you can see here a picture of how we revised the municipal boundary and the priority annexation, the southern priority annexation area over here. And those are in more detail in the document. The implementation strategy and matrix, this section really translates the plan into direct action. So like Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick pointed out, it'd be really helpful to have a checklist at the end of all the actions and all the directions that's in the plan. And this, you could consider your schedule or your index of the plan. If you're looking for a specific recommendation and where it fits into one of the chapters, you can flip through to this page, and you can find everything numbered, and every action is detailed here. So this is almost like a checklist to work through. And that's all I have for you as far as the presentation, but we are here to take questions and any further direction that council may have. Thank you.
We are open for questions, council.
Before anybody asks, we can amend the transportation chapter to include a photograph of the Land Tyke, if you.
We also have now another celebrity vehicle, and that is a truck in the form of a cow that has bubbles that come out of the back. Councilmember Hockes.
I don't have any questions, but I want to make a remark. You know, we, we killed a lot of trees for all this stuff that we came on. But those were very good meetings we had with regards to, you know, each phase that we were going through. And the thing that I appreciated is the fact that whenever we made a suggestion, like Mr. Hamrick did a few times, the suggestions were taken into heart, and we developed something even a little bit better, more comprehensive. And, you know, it looks good, you know? And I think between what you folks did, what we and council and the Planning Commission did working together, I think it did come out to a very nice 2040 plan. I just want to commend you folks for doing what you did, listening to what we had to say, not just the council, but the Planning Commission, and taking into consideration where we were going with regards to the future for Canyon City. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, nothing but kudos, guys. Thanks a lot for your efforts on this. I am really impressed with the plan. I think it's a, it's a stellar document that we can use and go forward with and be proud of here in Canyon City. And, but I do have a question for Ryan. So we do have the action matrix now. And my question is, how can we incorporate this with the balance scorecard?
Well, that's exactly where it does get incorporated. It, you know, one of our measures is looking at the plans that we have in place and, you know, the progress that we're making towards those plans. So that is the next step as we move into implementation. The balance scorecard will play a role in how we implement not, not just this plan, but other city plans as well.
This, we have essentially seven pages of action items, I guess we could call them. For instance, host an annual meeting with members of the business community, something like that. And so, so I'm interested in, in taking this and fleshing it out. And maybe it's, maybe it's a lower-level document than the balance scorecard, I'm not sure. But, but having, having, you know, getting back to the checklist idea, is there, is there a way that, that we can?
Yeah, so there's, you know, as far as the task list goes, there are several departments that, you know, may play different roles. So as we work on their annual work plans, those tasks will get folded into their annual work plan, and they'll, and that, that works into their balance scorecard for the year.
Thank you.
And that's a really good question.
Yeah. You know, the other thing that, that we'll be working on is, you know, when we have city council retreats, you know, using this as a framework for the city council retreats.
And thank you. And probably to add to future meetings, a balance scorecard update would be nice to have on one of our Wednesday meetings. There's about 250 action items, and that's kind of overwhelming and really expensive. And so I would say, and I don't know if you have recommendations too, I mean, it sounds like we have a little bit of a plan for moving forward, but I want to make sure that we tackle this well, and that we can be, put our energies in the right place at the right times.
Yeah, I guess my comment is, we tried to provide a level, the best level of specificity that we could. It's important to keep in mind, this is a 20-year plan. The city doesn't have bulldozers hiding around the corner, and when the gavel comes down to adopt it, they roll out and start building stuff.
Yeah, I know. I was taking some deep breaths. 20 years, 20 years. But I only have four more years potentially as mayor.
Right. And this is meant to transcend administrations, I guess. This is meant to be a playbook for all stakeholders at every level over the course of the long run. And a lot of it is going to be incumbent upon the city to be the lead on an action item. It may require some funding from the city in some way, shape, or form. It may require that the city partner with somebody else who could take a lead on an action. A lot of the recommendations, like some of the things that Rick was talking about, some of the things that you were talking about, Mayor, some actions on plans are to be led by and undertaken by the municipality. Other actions are to be led by and paid for by the private sector as development comes online, or opportunities are realized. A key part of the plan also is to help you secure funding through state and federal grants to get this done. So it is a lot. If you achieved half of the recommendations that are in here, that's a tremendous accomplishment. It's meant to be fluid, it's meant to be dynamic, the world doesn't stop as people plan. And it's meant to guide incrementally, whether it's annual budgeting, or staff initiatives, or the zoning ordinance rewrite, which you are undertaking simultaneously with this. That's a huge action to have checked off the list, massive. So it's meant to be that guide. It can be overwhelming. Take it piece by piece incrementally, use it on a regular basis, and you'll begin to chip away at it with success. So it is a lot. It's a lot.
Councilmember Reed.
So one of the things I really appreciated on the action matrix is the way you did the priorities and then the Es, how you graded them, which I'm sure a lot went into the gradings of these. But one of the things that I'm curious about is, so now that we have this, for the particular items that have to do with other entities, for example, FARs mentioned on here, or the REC district and things like that, how do we go about bringing in those stakeholders and communicating these things to them, and getting the buy-in and assistance to be able to go forward in unity?
Yeah, so again, it goes back to the balance scorecard and, you know, the, you know, the framework that council put together. And one of those frameworks is collaboration with outside entities. So a lot of it's, you know, as John said, you know, leading some of the conversations, but finding out who's, who the partners are. And, you know, we may not lead every initiative, but, you know, making sure that we're bringing the right people to the table and having those discussions as, as we move through this matrix.
I guess one of the things that I would be curious about, for example, is the interpretation of the grading of Es for those outside entities. You know, for example, does FAR think that, you know, action item 925 is really a C? Or if they think it's an A and they can do it faster, is that maybe an opportunity to be able to ease that up, because it's not such a big undertaking as maybe we originally interpreted it to be? So I was just curious kind of what the next steps were, so that's helpful. Thanks.
If I can respond, I think Councilmember Reed makes a real good point. Market and opportunity will drive a lot as one is, a lot of what is undertaken, when it is undertaken. And it may shift things as a priority from a high to a low or low to a high. You can't project or anticipate with some level of certainty what may, may be a development opportunity that just nobody saw coming, or a shift in the market six years from now that you're like, boy, we're so poised to take advantage of this curve in the market, nobody saw this coming. That opportunity and market dynamics will change the prioritization over the life of this plan, and that's okay. It's meant to be a guide, and you have to be willing to enable to sort of be nimble and strike at those opportunities as they present themselves. So it's a guide, use it as that. So that's a real good point.
I do have a question for page 53, and this is a crime density map. It says that this map shows crime density tracked by the Canyon City Police Department from 2016 to 2019. And it shows on the key, black for low, and then it's a gradient to grade to high. But on the map, it's black outside of city limits, and then there's a lot of blue dots, which is, blue dots are not included on the key. And so I'm wondering if there needs to be some more clarification on that map. Otherwise, it's like the entire city of Canyon City is high, high crime rate? I don't know.
Yeah, it's not, I, I see some spots of, low is blue, high is yellow. There's only a couple of saturation points of yellow.
Okay, so maybe it's the printing that I had on my page. Okay. All right. So mine showed just black.
Yeah, and I think, I think your, to your point, there's a few changes in here that we want to make that have nothing to do with content, but maybe scribners' errors, typos, and some visualization things that I've already noted that I'd like to see different. I don't believe the gradient on here is sufficient to show what we're getting at, which is basically where the majority of these circles are, it's very low crime. And there's only a couple of points of high, but you've got, the low is the darker color, the high is the lighter color. It should be just the opposite. So what I would suggest is we go back and look at the gradient scale visually for this map to get it correct. I think the data is correct. I think visually, it's not representing that data accurately. So it's technically correct, but it's not communicating it well.
Okay.
So I would suggest we fix that.
Okay. That would be excellent. Thank you.
That's a good catch.
Yeah, and it's different between what was printed in our books and what was printed here. And so, yeah, so changing it so that it can transcend different.
Absolutely. We can fix that.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to the action matrix, the, you know, being kind of a data-driven guy, that when I see something like this right away, I want to start sorting and categorizing, and slicing and dicing, so to speak. And so I would recommend that, that, that what I, what I would hope is that, that our city staff would be able to take this product, and, and then do that, sort it several different ways, including by the partner, including by whether it's long-term, ongoing, short-term, and, and start getting it in categories like that, to make it a more manageable document as far as planning goes. Right now, you have to go through the whole thing to see what, what are the long-term goals. It's not, it doesn't necessarily jump out at you, it's there, you know, but, but it, but, but now in our use of it, I think we need to do some slicing and dicing.
One of the things we can definitely provide is the, it's not going to look as nice as it is here, but we can provide the Excel file that you could do exactly what you're talking about.
And then you can query it any way you want, yeah. Great. Good. I like queries. Well, that will also allow staff to monitor it over time, checking off ones that have been accomplished, or in progress but not accomplished, but initiated versus uninitiated. And it will help staff and the city council track it over time. So we'll provide those Excel files.
Any other comments from council? In final comments, I just want to say, number one, thank you for the dedication to former council member Jim Meisner. It was incredibly appropriate, and I was deeply touched by it. I think that it's an honor that we have that permanently for him. Secondly, I was really skeptical of this process. We had done a gazillion studies, and like, not another study. If I have to do one more sticky note exercise about where we're going to see Canyon City in the future, I'm going to, like, slit my throat. And this is completely different. And in the past, some of my experiences have been that the final product that we were given was not palatable. Kind of to quote some of my kids, I have six children, it gets pretty chaotic sometimes. You, you take care of a lot of cities, I take care of a lot of kids, and I've had kids say, do you even know who I am? Because I forget their names. And sometimes I want to think, after all we've been through, do you even know who we are as Canyon City? And I really felt like you really were in sync with us, that you And I really felt like you really were in sync with us, that you put yourself in our shoes, and that a product was created that is palatable for us, and that resonates for Canyon City and who we uniquely are, and where we really do need to go, where we want to go. And that I can really see a scour, as you can tell, we're already ready to scour these 94 pages and 250 action items and put them to use and start checking them off. And like, just like you promised, this isn't going on the shelf, this is something that's going to actually be used and put into action. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been incredibly professional, timely, especially under the considerations of a global pandemic, and you've had exemplary vision and recommendations, and it's just been a real pleasurable process. I've really enjoyed it a lot, so thank you.
Well, again, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. One of the things you said really resonates maybe more than me is, when you said, you have six kids, I'm one of nine, and my mom might have gotten my name wrong every once in a while, but I knew she loved me, as she ran through by six brothers before she got me correctly, when chaos was happening. But to say that it seemed genuine that we knew and know who Canyon City is as a community, and I said at the beginning, I think maybe when we were being interviewed, we'll know we're successful if at the end of this isn't perceived as a House Seal Levine Plan, isn't perceived as a Planning Commission Plan, isn't perceived as a City Council's Plan, but it's perceived as a plan brought forth by the stewardship of the, stewardship of the community to reflect the community of Canyon City, and not anyplace else. And how many times at working meetings did I say, hey, other cities might do X, Y, and Z, but if that doesn't fly here, who cares what they do elsewhere? It's got to work for Canyon City. And I think I said that at several meetings, and...
Yes, and it was very well appreciated.
And the fact that you say this got to that point, to me, that's the hallmark of success or not, so thank you. It means a lot to me.
Yeah, thank you both, I'm John and Josh, very much. And if there's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion.
Actually, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I need to open the public hearing.
Yes, you do.
Let me get out my spreadsheet. Okay, the public hearing has been opened. We've had a report from our staff. City Administrator, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I just want to echo your comments regarding the plan and the work that House Seal Levine, Josh, and John, you know, your team did an exemplary job, but I want to say thank you for that. But also to Patrick, Patrick put in a lot of hours on this plan, and these comprehensive plans are usually done in 12 to 18 months. We crammed this one in in just, you know, right about 12 months, and during a pandemic. So, certainly appreciate everybody being adaptable and switching between Zoom and in-person and everything that we needed to do to get this accomplished, and certainly City Council and Planning Commission for all the extra meetings that you guys attended to help us get this plan through. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Patrick, as well. You know, I have that sign, thank you so much. An applause. And we will now close the public hearing and ask for Councilmember Smith to offer a motion.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution Number 12, Series of 2021.
I second.
Wait, 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 hold on, you didn't actually call for a public comment. I know, you opened a public hearing, and then, I don't know if anybody wants to speak, but...
All right, well, no one submitted any request to speak, so I thought that covered it.
Oh, okay.
But if you would like to make public comment, which you've had plenty of, but you're welcome to as part of the process.
Well, we did have something real quick.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, again, I thank you for letting me speak again. We are a little bit late to the party, Royal Gorge and River Initiative Organization, and so I apologize for that. I apologize that we haven't been as engaged in this process as we should have been, and, but coming, coming as we are now, one thing that we would like, if possible, on page 81, there's a list of recreation outdoors organizations and not-for-profits. It'd be fantastic if we get our name listed on that as well. We have Fremont Adventure Recreation, and, you know, some other groups that aren't even based here. But if, if we could get RG Rio on that list, that'd be fantastic. And we did notice a num, a listing referencing Fremont Adventure Recreation on the Parks and Trails Cooperation, a blurb like that in the waterways section somewhere would be, would be fantastic. And not that we want to toot our own horn, but we do want to be available and want people to know that we're available for volunteer opportunities if they want to help out, and we want to be there for, for any needs that you guys have as well, so.
You're a valuable stakeholder for this.
Well, thank you very much.
So, thank you for pointing that out, absolutely. Any other public comments? Please. And if you can state your name.
Hi, my name is Edna Nui. Perhaps some of you recognize me from working at the library. I've been a resident of Canyon City for 22 years. I would like to ask how this plan addresses the aggressive rise in the cost of living in Colorado, and how it plans to address the gentrification of Colorado. As I've said, I've lived in this community for 22 years. I would like to continue to live in this community for as long as I can, but the present housing crisis in Colorado means that such a thing is not possible for me and many of my peers who graduated from this very high school. So I'd like to know how this plan addresses that.
So one thing that the comprehensive plan does is it sort of identifies areas for new residential development. It emphasizes that there are perhaps other housing types that could be compatible with your current housing landscape to increase density and retain the character of the community. And it tees up some ways that the community can work with affordable housing organizations, not calling them to mind right now, but sometimes after a comprehensive plan is complete, there may be housing needs assessments and other things that can really get into the weeds of what a community's really specific affordable housing needs may be, to make sure that people who grew up in the community are aging in the community, or who, you know, are looking for the right place to raise a family, that there's a right-size home, and the right place to stay long-term in the community. And the comprehensive plan is maybe a little bit on the broader side of recommendations for that, but it does set the stage for things that the community can do. So I think that the point is a good one, and I think the document supports direction that the community can take to, to do some of those things and keep residents in the community.
Absolutely, and I will say that probably affordable housing and workforce housing is probably, I would say, number-one priority for this council right now. We have a number of avenues that we are searching and going through to make that more affordable and available, and to entice and incentivize more building that is, that people that work at the library and your peers that are graduating from high school can afford. Tonight, we have five public hearings, they all address abilities to have more affordable housing. Wednesday, we're talking about water tap fees to incentivize multifamily units, and there's a lot of other things that we need to have meetings, and we are planning on having meetings, to implement, to make that happen, as well as a direction to our economic development management team in working with developers and getting them here to Canyon City to build. So, yeah, absolutely, as I said, number-one priority for us right now.
Thank you, I have nothing else to add. Councilmember Haquez.
And also, young ladies, just for your information with regard to housing and that, we of council have made a lot of changes with regards to zoning and stuff like that. In fact, tonight, we're going to have one come up where we had some folks trying to get their property going for the purpose of affordable housing and that. So, it's, it's something that, I guess we might call them the stakeholders in the area. They've come to us and saying, I've tried this, I've tried that, I want to go another route, can you help us? And last council meeting, we did something to get that process going, and tonight, hopefully, we're going to finish that process with those folks that are trying to get a development going with regards to hopefully affordable housing. So, you know, it's high on our priority list also, just as it is for yours, and we hope that their new adventure is successful as they want it to be. But we haven't forgot affordable housing at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Yes, and I'd like to, I'd like to tell you a little bit more direct answer to that question, too, as building off what Mr. Haquez said. As part of this planning process, this planning document, as we've talked about tonight, is a 20-year vision for where, where we want to see the community go. And I'm sure, as a long-term resident, you've heard often that Canyon City has not been a friendly place for businesses and for development. And because of that, we also charged House Seal Levine with the, with the revisions of the, of our development codes and zoning regulations, with the idea of making things simple, making a process sure, so that you know what the rules are going in, and you know that if you follow the steps, you can get to the result that you're asking for. And so we're, you know, all of the things the mayor said, all of the things that Councilman Haquez said are true, and plus other things. And so, yes, we, we hear you, we, we understand the issues involved, and, you know, unfortunately, we don't have a magic wand, but we're, whatever we've got, we're trying to crank on it as best we can to help the community achieve affordable housing.
Thank you for your work at the library as well, sure appreciate it.
I'm glad to serve my community in that way.
Thank you for it, and thank you for the team that helps keep me on track in doing what's legal and appropriate.
I will not interrupt anymore.
No, that's okay, I need all the help I can get. We have opened the meeting, we've had this, the report, we've had the public speech. I am closing the public hearing for reals, and we'll turn the time over to Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution Number 12, Series of 2021, with the revision of adding RG Rio to...
In, in the appropriate places.
What's that?
In the appropriate places.
In the appropriate place.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye, very much aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, we are incredibly excited, I, I feel like we need a hand of applause for this process, it's incredible.
I got to tell you, as a, as a planner, you sort of look back on your portfolio or your career, and certain jobs sort of stand out in communities that you sort of fall in love with and are really proud of the work that is done and what comes out of it, in a real partnership. And Josh and I were talking about it on the way here, that this is one of those, it's one of the ones we both most fondly think of when we think of all the work that we've done across the country. This one really resonates with us, so it's been a real honor, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you, thank you for that compliment, we appreciate, we feel likewise. We do need to move on now to our other items on the agenda. We've had some people waiting here for a very long time, and thank you, we really appreciate you being here for the long haul. These are luckily second readings, and it should go pretty well. Catherine says they are second readings, do I have to read the whole thing? Because I did it at the first reading.
No, just, just the top, just the title, the part in bold.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to item number 9A, and this is the second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 13, Series of 2021. Do we have anything we want to report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was consulting with our consultant. No, we have had no further public contact about this, we've got no comments either for or against the proposal, since council considered this originally on June 7.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance 13, Series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, City Council. Renowned item number 9B, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 14, Series of 2021. Patrick.
So again, this was a public hearing item before council on June 7. Between that evening and tonight, we have had no additional comments from the community either for or against this proposal. I will tell you that when Planning Commission reviewed the comprehensive plan the evening of June 8, knowing that they had just recently held a public hearing on this particular rezoning request, they asked that the land use plan be amended to reflect this particular zone change. So, again, Planning Commission caught the fact that the land use plan was still showing that property as industrial rather than as R1, low-density residential, and that change has been incorporated.
Thank you, Patrick. Councilmember Smith?
Nope, I'm void, I was just going to propose the last motion.
Would you like to do this one?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance number 14, Series of 2021, on second reading.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, City Council. Now for item 9C, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 16, Series of 2021.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is an ordinance that would approve an ADU on the property at 2773 Cherry Street. Again, this was an item you held a public hearing on the evening of June 7. Between that evening and tonight, we have had no additional contact from the public either for or against this proposal, so as it stands, there are no new issues to consider with this.
Thank you, Patrick. Councilmember Schmisher, would you like to give a hand and a motion?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to propose a motion to approve ordinance number 16, Series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council, congratulations, Paula Peterson. Item number 9D, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 17, Series of 2021.
And finally, so this is an ordinance that would allow for an ADU at 9, I'm sorry, 319 North, or 3, 313.
315.
315 North 9th, if I could actually read my own staff report. This also went to public hearing the evening of June 7. Between that evening and tonight, we have had no additional contact from the public on this, so there is no new information or issues to be presented.
All right, would anyone like to give the motion on this? Councilmember Reed.
Madam Mayor and Council, I approve that we approve ordinance number 17, Series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you so much, City Council, and congratulations to those who came and went through this whole meeting, and best of luck in your new projects. We now have item number 9E, and this is the introduction in first reading by title only of ordinance 18, Series of 2021, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Deleting Section 3.36.030 and Amending Certain Sections of Chapter 13.08 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Water Shut-Off and Notice." Thank you again, safe travels home to you all. I'll turn the time over to you, to our Finance Director, Tammy Nordike.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you, you have the proposed ordinance number 18, Series of 2021. At the June 9 general government meeting, we did discuss the need to make the changes to the municipal code as it relates to the water shut-off and notices. This ordinance is the draft that was presented at the meeting, but we did make some changes, so you do have the original, you have the redlined copy on there.
And the clean copy represents those red lines, just to clarify.
Yes, so you do have both copies.
And I can go over those changes if that's all right.
Absolutely, thank you, Catherine.
Okay, so in section 2 of the ordinance subsection B... Okay, so in section 2 of the ordinance subsection B, you should have a red line there that, this came up actually after your General Government Meeting, owners, it, you know, it says that the bills should be mailed to, and, and Tammy had brought up that some are getting them by electronic mail, so we added that language in there. And then I wanted to add a little bit in, you know, if someone changes their email address and doesn't tell us that, you know, that, how that's going to be handled. So we added that in there. And then down in, sorry, my computer screen, section, hold on, sorry. 5B, thank you, Councilmember Smith. So I referenced again the electronic mail, if requested, of the, of previous section. And then this was brought up by Councilmember Schwemer?
Schmisher.
Schmisher. I've been practicing all night with Ryan, so I messed it up.
She has good advice on remembering it.
Fisher. Yeah. God, I still messed it up, I apologize. So you had, you had raised the issue of the 30 days or $40, whichever came, occurs first, and we talked about it, and it's 30 days with a balance of $40. So it's those two things have to qualify, so.
Very good.
And that's, those are the only corrections we made.
Thank you, thank you both for your work on this ordinance. Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of do the easy one first, maybe on page 2, under B, this is ordering the disconnect of the water service without further notice to the water customer. And I would just note that we'd been talking that the water customer is, is really defined as the owner of the real property, and, and it's our intention to give that notice to that person, the owner of the real property, is that correct? Because water customer could be a little bit confusing, it might be the tenant rather than the owner. Do I understand that correctly?
It's always the owner.
It's always the owner.
Yeah, the tenant can receive the bill, but they are not technically the water customer. The owner is, remains the water customer, they receive a copy of it.
So we've got that defined somewhere, I, I'm just worried that the, that water customer could mean the user of the water. And then on the previous page, under B, it says, "We add the addition that owners may request bills be sent via electronic mail." And that if they don't, if they change an email address without notice, that, that the electronic mail could be canceled. And, and I would just recommend that we have, you know, there, there either needs to be a length of time that they go in that penalty box, maybe not forever type thing, and, and maybe some type of process or something there.
Yeah, my, the, my intent in drafting it was that, that request is canceled, not all requests are canceled. Like, they could come in and say, "Oh, I have a new mail address," and make a new request, and we would honor that. So it's just that request to that email address would be canceled. Does that make sense?
It, it does.
Okay.
It does.
But I can massage it a little bit to clarify?
And, and yes, that would, I think that would be, I think that would be great to, to add something there, to make sure that it's, it's not a forever.
It's not a lifetime ban.
Yeah, it's not a lifetime ban.
Sure.
Is that something that we can amend tonight, that you would, that you would have the, that language for the second reading?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank the Finance Director and the City Attorney, really appreciate the edits made and also receiving the red line version, it makes it so much easier to understand what's been changed, so thank you.
If there are no more comments, I would like to entertain a motion with the amendment for the changes, would you like to go ahead and do that?
Sure. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve a bill for ordinance number 18, Series of 2021, an ordinance of the City of Canyon City deleting Section 3.36.030 and amending certain sections of Chapter 13.08 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Water Shut-Off and Notice with a future modification that we will see on second reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you, council, thank you, staff, thank you all who attended the meeting and participated today. This meeting is adjourned.